Okay, all right. Then we will begin our meeting. And today is Tuesday, April 18th. This is a special early edition of the Hanson Select Board Meeting. And please rise and join me in the Pledgeable Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are missing one of our esteemed colleagues, Mr. Heel, but I feel hopeful that either in person or virtually, we should be joined by him shortly. And it would be wonderful, Paul, if you would zoom out a little bit.
Spotlight on town.
Okay. All right. So we're really going to just skip the formalities of the announcements, which I don't think we have anyway. It's just part of our standard agenda. And we're going to talk about the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Assessment. Okay. He thought it was at 4:30. So we will... So last week, as you will call, and several weeks prior to that, we had discussed that we really could not afford more than 3.75% for the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Assessment. The assessment came in at a substantially higher percentage. Mr. Karchoff, what was the exact percentage that we were assessed?
Okay. Yep, let me get right here. So the original assessment was $916,000 increase. And I'll get the exact percentage. I think it was like, let me just get it for you. There we go. So it was, so I'm going to say 96.
Just over 7%, Eric?
Yep, 7%. Yep, you got 6.9. So round it up to 7.
Now, to clarify, the 6.97% is in addition to the district using one-time money of $500,000 this year and last year, $300,000. So I just want to clarify because when people think that it's a level funding plus the 7%, that's really not entirely accurate. It's using one-time grant money, which would be comparable to us using ARPA money for our funding, and then saying that we're only asking for X amount more. So if you add that money on, it's probably more in the vicinity of an 8% to 9% increase over prior years. And for a town with, that really relies upon residential taxes for our revenue and new growth, that's a staggering amount for us to absorb. In a year when we haven't had particularly robust growth, it's been okay, but it hasn't been a B in a year. What is our overall growth this year, Eric, if you don't mind?
So basically, the growth in the tax levy, we have it as 3.5%. And the last year, the new growth is estimated at $300,000, up from $253,000 the year before.
Okay, so we've grown 3.5%.
Right, the tax levy, yeah. So it's the prop 2.5, which is 2.5% plus there's some new construction, whatever. So the total tax levy is projected next year to be 3.5% increase.
Okay. And so, in essence, where the proposal we had as a board on the floor was to clearly prioritize education by giving more than what we've got for growth. So we're saying 3.75. And that's in fact more than what we've given to most of our other departments for growth. If we look at our increases in the contracts, you know, those are on the 2, 2.5 percentage. So what, where we're at now is that we were holding firm with the 3.75. Both boards of selectmen in Whitman and in Hanson sent a letter to the school district indicating that we were not able to support the budget that was in front of us. It was not sustainable, and we honestly couldn't support it. And the reason we couldn't support it is because if we were to fully fund the proposal that was on the table, that would have meant reductions in staff, probably from our first responders. And I know you guys have both been through this before with me. And I know Ed and Ann were not part of the board, but you certainly were part of how everybody was feeling at the time. And we don't want to do that, and we don't think it's the right thing to do. So last week, in response to getting the letter from both boards, the school committee met. And one of the things that Superintendent Simonek had put on the floor, and I want to emphasize that this has not been voted or ratified by the school committee yet. So I think this is critical to understand. It's kind of in the ether, but it hasn't been voted on, is to reduce their assessment overall to both towns by, I believe it's 674,000. Eric, is that correct?
Yep.
Yep. And that's by using one-time money from their E&amp;D account to the tune of $500,000. And there's some programs that they're not going to offer that they were going to offer. And so they are proposing that if they come down that much, that perhaps the towns could come up. And Lisa, did you have that email that I had asked you to print that you got from, I think it was either John Stamper or Simonak last week? Because it's radically into the whole discussion here.
Excuse me, can I just clarify something?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so basically, what they proposed, their best-case scenario was like, reduce the assessment by 653,500. And the way that was going to be done to them was, they were going to cut 153,000 in the budget, and then they were going to use 500,000 of the E&amp;D.
Yep, yep, yep. Yes, I was saying the same thing.
Yep.
The 153 were a couple of proposed programs that they were, they were going to have, that they're willing to cut. So again, was not voted on. There was a spirited discussion at the school committee meeting. One of the things that, you know, where I'm at is I think there's definitely an opportunity for us to forensically look at, how the heck did we get here yet again this year? Where we've tried to open up the lines of communication, we've been very clear about what we could afford, and yet we are in a position where we're several weeks before town meeting, we've still got this matter unsettled. So I think there's plenty of time for us after the fact to take a look at that, but we don't really have a lot of time right now to look at that. Mr. Heel, thanks for joining. And I know that there were a lot of logistics, so we're just happy to have you here with us. So where we were at, just to catch you up, is the school district last week met, I should say the school committee. They met to use one-time funds of $500,000 and then to cut some programs or from their budget to the tune of 653,000 and some odd, roughly 654,000. In order for them to do that and not have to cut staff, they're asking for roughly $166,000?
That's roughly, yeah, that's right, yep. Over and above the 3.75.
Yes, above the 3.75.
Yep.
Now, here's our, here's the options we have, and this is totally like, you know, whatever you guys want to do. It's the will of the board. Our option is stand firm, 3.75, we were pretty clear about it. We don't have the money without dipping into one-time funds. We did have the town accountant and Ms. Green take a look at what we could do in light of that sort of, I guess I'd call it, potential counterproposal. And there is some one-time money from ARPA, which would not be budget-sustaining. It would follow the rules that we've been following, which is it would fund one-time things. That would allow us to fund every article we talked about and not cut anything else from our budget, but it would be taking $166,000 of ARPA money to make this new potential proposal from the school district work. So we have do nothing, stick with 3.75. There will be collateral fallout at the school district level where folks will get laid off. Okay? And I'm not opining one way or the other on that. There were a large number of positions added over the last couple of years in the discussion with the school committee. What was explained was that a lot of them were for COVID kind of related, like emotional counseling, that type of thing, like, you know. So that's the explanation from the school committee. I don't know precisely how many positions they'd have to lay off. I think they were tossing around 10 to 12 teachers, but I wouldn't want to be quoted on that. So if we do nothing, we stick with the 3.75, what we would do is at town meeting, we would continue and have our budget, as we've discussed and as we had voted on previously, would be presented in the warrant. And to the extent that the district does not formally come down on that budget and the school committee doesn't adopt a new budget, or to the extent it's different than our budget in any way, we would end up having two articles or two potential budgets for the school district in that informational warrant. And people at town meeting would be asked to vote for one or the other of them. Now, the downside of that is that to the extent that folks vote for our budget, there will be layoffs at the school level. To the extent that people vote, again, this is if nobody, you know, nobody negotiates at all, to the extent that folks come and feel particularly strongly about the school district having the original budget with no cuts, then we'd be looking at layoffs. And I can't gild the lily on that because there's just no other way to put it. So it's, so that's one scenario. The other scenario is, we discussed tonight, what Eric has come up with, which is that 166,000 from ARPA one-time funds, and again, consistent with what the board is saying, which is we're not going to use this to supplement our budget, we're going to use it for one-time expenses. So what we'd be doing is going through the line items and changing where we're funding them from, but still keeping all of the funding that we had in place.
Was that from our budget or the school's budget?
ARPA, from our budget. They don't have ARPA, they have SRA and other various acronyms. So we would, we would have our budget, and presumably if that proposal that was discussed last week at the school committee meeting was adopted tonight by the school committee, then they would come down that 654, we would come up 166, nobody's got layoffs. Now, I want to be crystal clear. Using one-time money and any, regardless of who's doing it, is literally putting a Band-Aid on this. It is unsustainable. And what's going to happen next year is, we can already kind of forecast, of course, we are hiring somebody to do the forecast, but we already know that there's a pretty huge deficit for the school district, you know, just going into next year. And probably a deficit that we're not going to be able to make up with one-time funds. We don't, when we say we're using one-time funds, we can't be the boy that cries wolf. They're literally one-time funds. We're not going to get them back again, we're not going to find some magical source that we can, you know, tap into. So, yes, Mr. Heel?
So when we use, I just, I have a little bit of confusion on this whole thing. And my concern is always using these one-time funds, and then the next year, and they say it's a 2.5% levy, and they count in those one-time funds.
We actually did discuss that just before you came in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, you would have no way of knowing that. So one of the things that I had asked Eric about was, you know, so what was our assessment this year? And so sort of, you know, the official position of the school committee and of the district is that our assessment is 7%. But that's not entirely true, because to your point, SRA money has been used in the last couple of years to supplement the budget, and that's one-time money. And so when that goes away, that, you know, that gap is even bigger. So you're really looking at like a 9%, you know, if we, let me put it this way. If we waved our magic wand and that one-time money wasn't there, and all of the things that the district was asking to have, to be funded, were still going to be funded, we'd be looking at a 9% assessment. So I don't know if that's responsive to what you were asking.
No, that is, but it just opens up more and more and more questions.
Yeah, can I, can I?
Yeah.
I, the one-time, I'm new to this, I understand that, shooting from the hip. We're very careful on this board with our use of one-time funds.
Yes.
We do it as carefully as possible so that we're not adding to the regular budget year to year and make it go up. We're dealing, I'm sorry, we're dealing with a board that is not that responsible. They, I believe the number is 31 positions over COVID.
Yep.
Why are we having to deal with the possible layup of essential personnel to keep 31 people? They're not all teachers. That's what I know. I don't want them to refer to us teachers because they're not.
Yeah.
They're not affect, I mean, the kids are not learning from these people, they're being supported, whatever they're being used for. It's not teachers that are going to be cut. So I'm kind of hardcore, hold the line. That's my feeling.
Okay, all right. Mr. Hickey?
What is Whitman's percentage two weeks ago?
Five.
Five? And they're still at five?
Five. Now, their five equates to us at like 4.22.
Okay.
Which is about this gap, actually, to be honest with you.
Can I just mention this real quick? Because Lisa and I talked with the town administrator in Whitman. Under this scenario where our assessment would go up five, women's would go up 5.96% or 6%. So that's just the way like the math worked.
Yeah. And I don't know where Whitman, I don't know where Whitman's going to, I mean, they're going to be tonight too, and I don't know where they're going to land.
That's why I'm confused, because the way they were talking, they could do the 5%, but we're going to be, it sounded like the way Dan had spoke, that there wouldn't be any cuts, they would just be shorthanded, which didn't really make sense to me at the time, because most likely, our fire department will be covering for their fire department because of the situation that they're going to have to do over there. My other question, Eric, and I don't know if you have the figure. The 3.75 that we can do.
Yep.
But if we add 166 of one-time money that we have, what does that change our percentage to? So by adding 166,000, we go up to 5%?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Laurie, you had also mentioned too, that if we did that, the school would be willing to drop 654,000?
Again, I want to be super clear, they have not taken a vote on this, okay?
A vote on it?
There was robust discussion, it seemed as though they were leaning in the direction of taking that vote last week, and then they didn't. And, you know, tempers are riding high, emotions are riding high, and I can't predict what they're going to do. If this board were to decide to make any kind of a movement, I would very strongly suggest that our vote embed in it that it's contingent upon that reduction. So that we're not making a move without them making the move first.
Okay, because it's really not, and if that was the number, 654, they're not taking that out of their budget if we are adding 166. They're really only taking out 488,000. And then whatever Whitman would add, or if Whitman was equal?
Well, no, they're still, they're still taking a hit on those. That's, that's, their proposed reduction is assuming that we're both going to be able to come, their reduction would be more if the two towns were coming up with what they've asked.
In order for them to get Hanson at 5%, they need to come up with a $653,000. And they planned on doing that by using 500,000 of their one-time E&amp;D money and then doing the other cuts. So they have to kind of reduce the assessment in total by 653,000 to get Hanson down to the 5%.
But I put it a different way, Eric. If neither town budged, and we both said, no, but we're going to stick with 3.75, and Whitman said, nope, we're sticking with the 5.0, which is still, there's, there's not balance, so that would become problematic at town meeting anyway, because we wouldn't be funding the budget the same way. What would be the total that the district would have to cut for their budget if we both just stood firm?
If we both stood, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a good point. So in order to...
Because I think that will answer what your thing is. We can keep talking while you calculate that.
Yeah, let me calculate it out there. Yeah, that's a good one.
So to ask more questions, just to get a better understanding of this. Why, if we increase every town department by 2.5%, why would we give the school, which is another department, more than 2.5%?
That's what Ed was trying to say last week.
Right. And I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, and, you know, I'll use the senior center where they have a staff of three. And I don't know how many people actually work in the district, but it's a lot more than three. So 2.5% at the senior center is a lot smaller, but it's still 2.5%. Whereas for the district, where they may have 300 or 400 employees, it's still 2.5% going into their budget.
Yep.
So I guess, you know, my question is, why are we at 3.75 or 5% when all other departments are at 2.5%? And I know that Whitman is part of it, and I'm sure Eric could come up with a formula to show me this, but this is what I need to see.
I mean, that like, like, that's what they should have, like, I'm just really confused because if they, if the school had, like, I can't, I can't even put my head around it. If they, why didn't they stay at the 2.5%? And, and, I'm not even, no, no.
No, no, Ed, I understand what you're coming, no, I understand where you're coming from, because realistically, like, the rest of our departments, and there are exceptions, I want to be clear about that, because we have had some department heads make cases, you know, right? Like Steve has got, you know, we've had people come and make cases. So there are exceptions. I'm not saying across the board it's always been 2.5, but that's generally the rule of thumb. And so most departments are backing into that 2.5%. That was not the case here. And if you recall, we actually met with the school committee and said, 3.5% is what we can afford. That's what we said. And Whitman said 5%. And it turned out they were a little, they were a little optimistic on their, the 5%, but they were willing to make it work because they had made that commitment through the district. We were able to come up just a tad, you know, just a little bit. And, and yes, do I agree, Ed, that ideally, that we would want people to take into consideration revenue before one builds a budget? That's, to me, fundamental. Something has really broken down here, and there's no doubt about that to me. One of the things, I did speak with the chair of the school committee and the chair of the Whitman board, and I will, I will, I do say, I'm sorry, I recognize you, but just a sec. I spoke to them last week, and, you know, one of the things that, where I'm at is, we have to do better. I mean, I, this is like worse than Groundhog Day. It's like Groundhog Day on steroids, every day, every week, every, every year. You know, you can set your watch and go, here we are, it's the first or second week in August, and, I mean, April, and we're going to start, you know, saber rattling, clutching pearls, you know, and all this stuff. And it doesn't need to be this way. And I don't know why this keeps happening, but as long as we've been on the board, it's happened. Some years are worse than others, some years, you know, we've been able to make it work, others we haven't. You know, we've had to do an override. None of us want an override. I don't want to have to do an override. I don't even like to say the word out loud. But the reality of the fact is, if we continue to have, you know, this situation with the schools, and not ju, and if I'm honest, not just with the schools, because, you know, that 2.5% is really, really difficult when you've got insurance costs and things we don't control that are going up. But we still manage to do, for the most part, with the town budget. And I agree, Ed, you know, one of the things Mr. Lamontina had said is, I don't understand why it seems as though the numbers we gave were completely disregarded when this budget was built. And I think the argument from the school committee, and again, I'm not making the argument, I'm just repeating, is that they see their role as advocating for education for the kids. And so in their mind, if there are educational deficits or staffing deficits or whatever it is that they think is going to improve the educational outcome for kids, they feel that it's their job to argue, you know, vigorously for those, and to advocate for the superintendent to put together a budget that reflects the needs and wants of the district. So I think this is, unless that changes, that fundamental, you know, kind of way that we're interacting and how we see our roles changes, we are going to continue to circle the drain on this every year. So, Mr. Weeks?
Thanks, sorry about that.
So a couple things. You know, if we want to try and stay within the 2.5% levy and not have to do a substantial override, there's a couple things I want to, I want to point out, is that if we go up to 3.5%, just basic numbers means that, you know, we were talking about, you were talking about, other departments have to stay within 2.5%. It's not really true, because if we have to pull the 2.5% to fund more than 2.5% for other departments, it means that they're actually getting less than 2.5% and other folks are getting more than 2.5%. So I really want to say that we have other departments, to your point, that have to make do with actually less than what we should be able to allocate to them. In addition to that, we also have 1% that's mandated by law to go to capital improvements, which we are now cutting, which means that the 1% out of all of that is actually now being reallocated to other departments to be able to do that.
No, just to be clear, that's not on the table for this. We're going to, this is funding the capital improvement. No, we're, yeah, we're not cutting capital improvement.
If we go up more than 3.75%, we're going to have to make some drastic cuts unless we decide to remove personnel, and every option should be on the table so that everybody knows what's at stake here. In addition, moving forward, I think that we really have to come to a realization that at this time next year, exactly 12 months from now, we are going to be in a position in which I don't want anybody to be caught off guard. We are looking at a substantial override for next year to balance the budget. That is going to put everything on the table in terms of capital improvements, non-capital improvements, personnel line items. And I'm finding that we're going to be doing this once every three to four years if we continue to operate this way. So I'm not saying, I think we have to really, not necessarily draw a line in the sand, but we have to have a more planful way of doing these types of budgets. And I understand that the school budget in particular has a lot of stuff out of our control that we have to wait kind of until last minute to try to figure out some of these things. So I get there's real-life scenarios that get in the way, but we're trying to make sure that we're funding a budget that is responsible to capital improvements, personnel, additional investments that occur, giving people a fair share of the pie that actually does exist, without raising people's taxes considerably the following year. This budget is really a baseline for actually a much larger discussion, starting May 2nd, because I don't know how we piece this together. We are literally pulling to fund this budget right now. We're pulling every coin out of every couch cushion to the tune of funds that were not expended from previous town meetings, funds that exist in one-time aspects that we'll never, we'll never get again, grants and other things that exist. Those things will not be, so if we exhaust all of the things, even the tax title properties and stuff, if you go down that path, you only have so many things that you could actually hail Mary and piece together a budget. If we, we're literally doing that, and I want to be very clear, literally doing that to fund this budget right now. All of those things that are getting us band-aided through this budget will not exist next year, and we have to fund everything in the operations budget as if we didn't have these ones. So we're, we're starting May 2nd in a substantial deficit.
Yes.
Substantial deficit. So I, 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 I know we're, we're here to talk about this year's budget, which is obviously important, but we cannot have the conversation of this year's budget without talking about and warning the citizens of what's coming next year. Because I don't want anybody to be surprised that we're going to have to make some substantial decisions, uh, starting May second.
We're making next year worse.
We're starting off.
I just want to be clear, because there's no way to gild the lily on this, okay? And, and, you know, we're making next year worse if we vote one-time money now. And even with some of the decisions we've made in the budget with one-time money, we're making next year worse.
And that's, so part of what I want, why I wanted to belabor that point is because it's great that Lisa, you've been able to work on this, and Eric, you've been able to make magic on this. But I don't want it to get lost that just because we can solve the problem right now, that somehow we made it. We, we're not. Like, I want us to all to recognize that we're in a really bad financial situation right now, and by trying to paint it through low, rose-colored lenses, doesn't make the problem go away next month. We're in a substantial financial situation right now.
Yeah, it's equivalent like using the kids' college fund to get through the year.
It, it's the truth, and I know there's plenty of people out there, because, and, and rightfully so. I mean, I, I'm by no means against the school, no one here. It's, it's very pro-school board, uh, but, and there are plenty of people out there that are saying, let's do an override, let's make it happen. I'm willing to pay for that. There's lots of other people that can't. So you, I want to be able to acknowledge the fact that people are totally fine with doing it. Let the people decide if that's the way they want to go. But I really, that's a conversation for really May second, as far as I'm concerned right now, because we're too far in it right now. But I just really want to point that, you know, make this very clear. If we successfully navigate this budget this year, we are significantly behind the eight ball, starting May second.
Hundred percent.
I cannot emphasize that enough. I really want that to be driven, that point to be driven home.
Yeah, so just to, um, cut, circle back. In order for them to get to the three point seven five percent assessment that, um, we want, they'd have to, um, right now, they're proposing six fifty, three five hundred. They'd have to do an extra four hundred and twenty-six thousand. So, and the other one-time sources of revenue that they might have, or whatever they have, but that's what it would be on their budget.
Yeah.
On the school budget.
On the school budget.
Well, and that's just for our part, that, they'd have to do, make up the Whitman, uh.
No, I included bo- I, I, I included both. Yeah, the way I figured it is, I took four twenty-six, and if you take thirty-eight percent of that, that'll get us where we want to be and whatever that comes out to Whitman. So their budget itself, they'd have to come up with, um, that additional four twenty-six.
So it'd basically be a million dollars for them to.
Right, yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly, yeah. Little bit under one point one, yeah. That's.
Mr. Hill?
Um, I just, what you were talking about being behind the eight ball, that's even with a three point five or three point seven five. That's even if we don't put the hundred sixty, we're still behind the eight ball.
We should be definitely at two and a half percent.
Uh, exactly, I was just going to say the same.
And I just, I really just want to be realistic about this. Even in a modest two and a half percent, we would still be behind the eight ball because we're funding things with one-time funds.
Yep.
It, our growth is not, our revenue is not in pace with our expenses.
You know, we all have wish lists. We all have things that we wish we could do. But there's reality, and the reality is, you can only get so much blood out of the stone. And I really do think that they need to be more responsible about putting that budget together and stop trying to get more blood out of the stone that's almost dry.
So I don't disagree with that, but I think that, you know, running, when a school, I don't think that anything that they're advocating on the school committee, I personally, I think it's a need, I do.
I'm sure it's a need.
But, but I guess the reason why I'm saying that is because I want to validate the idea that they are advocating the way they should. But the problem that we have is, we can't, we can't build a budget this substantial with two weeks' notice. So even if it's all needs and it's all, like, really, like, it's, it's teachers and all these things, it's really hard to have a mindful and thoughtful budget process with two weeks' notice, regardless of whether, you know, whether or not they got the budget. Even if they were guessing, it would have been easier for us to say, okay, these are very, very preliminary numbers. I have no idea, I still haven't gotten anything from the governors, I have no idea. But this is what we're thinking, and even if we got something just on the back of a notebook that we could try and piece.
I guess we're build, they're building things on maybes and.
Exactly.
Well, that, that's, okay, so I really think, and again, you know, this is, I mean, we can talk about this at another time. But honestly, right at, starting May second, I would really like to, the school committee to start thinking about what they're going to be asking us for next year.
Right.
So that we can try to calibrate. And if there's something that we, like, I don't, I'm making this up, but like, we need, you know, some kind of, um, screens in each of the classrooms, and it's going to be X amount of money, so that we know and we can say to the rest of the guys, like, all right, guys, you know, like, Chief Mix and Chief O'Brien, like, you know, this year really, you know, we're going to take one for the team, we're going to take one for the school committee. We've got to come up with, you know, another million and a half out of our budget. So everybody's really going to have to squeeze this year. And then sort of like flow, and then the next year, okay, oh, Chief O'Brien, you need what? Okay, you know, this is the way that the rest of the departments have been dealing, but we just haven't really integrated. There's got to be better communication. But that said, it doesn't change anything about where we're at, we're at at present. So on the table is, we stand firm. Um, and we, we, knowing that that may end up being, uh, that we have the two budgets and that, you know, things may not go in our favor, but they might. Um, and, uh, the other option is to, um, utilize the one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in ARPA money and, uh, have the school district and school committee vote to reduce the assessment by the six hundred and fifty-three thousand. Those are really the two proposals on the table. And it's, the board's will, so I don't know what people want to do.
If we don't put the one sixty-six in, that a hundred percent means there will be layoffs?
Yes, that's what they said at the school committee meeting.
And now, Chair, I thought you said ten to twelve.
Again, I said, don't quote me on that, but that was the number I thought I heard getting tossed around. And if Eric's number's right, four hundred and something thousand, that probably seems like the right number, right?
Yeah, forty thousand a piece, a little bit above, yeah, yeah.
How much?
But, but, I, I would say, I don't know how much he makes, but four hundred and twenty-six thousand divided by ten, I'd like forty-two thousand six hundred.
Forty-two thousand, those are not teaching positions. Um.
Again, don't quote me on that.
Right, which, and it's just easy math. Uh, you know, if it's ten layoffs, it's forty-two thousand, uh, per person for the ten layoffs. Those are not teaching positions. They could be administration positions, part-time positions. Because the, the one thing that we haven't talked about, and Lisa, I forget the day, the exact date you were hired. Do you know it?
April twenty-six, twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one. Um, how many positions has the town put since Lisa has been hired? How many new positions have we either made or added on to, including police and fire? Um, you know, I know we have a part-time position at the senior center. We now have a full-time veterans' agent. How many positions has the district put on in that time?
Thirty-one.
And if I'm not mistaken.
And that doesn't include paraprofessionals, but thirty-one new positions.
And if I'm not mistaken, um, enrollment has gone down.
It has gone down.
Okay, so enrollment has gone down, the positions have gone more than two and a half or three percent, or whatever number you want to use, compared to the rest of the town. Uh, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's forty percent, forty-seven percent of the town's budget goes to the district. And I could be wrong, but I thought I saw forty-six point nine percent. So they get almost fifty percent. Um, but the other departments in town get the other fifty.
Yep.
So if we're only going up by four or five positions, and they're going up by thirty-one, something is off. And I really don't think it pertains to the education of the children, of the kids. I think it's other positions that can be skimmed.
Um. All right, so, so you're leaning in the direction of stand firm on the three point seven five.
I, I would like to hear what the high school says, um, what the district says, but if we have to vote now before we go to that meeting.
Well, we're just taking a preliminary vote, just to make sh- you know, but we can, you can change your vote when we get there.
We want to be on the same plane.
Yeah, I, well, you know, to the extent possible, like, I don't want to, I don't want to strike on anybody, but I just kind of wanted to make sure that we were sort of, you know, as united as we can be without violating anybody's, you know, right to vote however they want. Mr. Weeks?
I would say this, I, I, I mean, unless you really want to vote, we've already made our stance pretty darn clear. Um, so if we want to take a vote, I'll put a vote that we go, I'll, I'll make a motion that we go with option one of what you were saying of staying firm.
Okay.
Because I'm not prepared to make a vote on something that you've said a bunch of times hasn't even been voted on by the school committee. So option two to me isn't even a, a thought. Uh, I'm not making votes on promises, it's not, I, I go, I do votes on facts. So option two doesn't exist. Option one, we've already made very clear, that's where we're standing.
Okay, what I committed, um, to is that after we met, when we opened in the three-party meeting, um, that I would let people know where we were heading, not like an official direction or not, but not an official vote or not. Um, and I think based on where we were leaning, um, Mr. Howard was either going to ask the school committee to take a vote or not, or not bother taking a vote. Um, so we can just let it play out if that's what people want to do, that's fine.
I, I feel like if the school committee was that willing to work with us on this, they would have voted already, as opposed to waiting for us to give a vote, because then they have all the leverage of whatever it is that we need to talk about. We already know where we stand. Uh, we know what we can do. I'm a hundred percent in favor of the schools, and quite frankly, if, maybe if they gave us a little bit more concrete stuff to work with, I'd have a better opinion of it, but I don't, and I don't like to work off of maybes.
Okay.
That's, so that's my personal stance, that's why I'm making the motion the way it is.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Okay, I agree too.
I have no problem voting, but.
Okay, so, and I, and then I think, you know, so we'll go to that meeting and we'll say, um, our inclination is to stand firm, because as it is, we don't have any voted counterproposal. Um, and, um, we, we're, we're open to hearing that.
Yes.
And then we will take that under advisement, and we will take it back amongst ourselves and have a conversation about whether that might change where we're at.
I, I feel more confident that way. That's why I'm saying, if you want to vote, I go with option one, but I honestly think we don't have to do a vote here, I feel.
No, no, we don't, we're definitely not, not required to. I just wanted to get a sense of where people were at.
So, so basically, like, in some, so they took a vote for an assessment of budget, and that's been rejected. And that's where you're at now.
Yep.
And you've let them know that we've worked our budget, we can afford three point seven five percent. So that's kind of where we're at.
Yep, yep.
I, I like to think that with, this board in particular, um, is that if people come with reasonable understandings and a reasonable idea of wanting to work and figure it out and be transparent, communicative, and all of these things, we're, we're not willing to listen, but we cannot go off of maybes. It doesn't work like that. These are real dollars.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I think I, uh, that's where I really regret that, um, there wasn't, um, a better open line of communication about impacts, um, you know, directly to us. Um, so hopefully we can do better next year that way. But, um, all right, did anybody have anything else, um, to add? I will say, um, one of the things that I, um, did hear happening, and I just want to let you know, my personal feeling on it was, um, there seemed to be a lot of questioning of, well, can Hanson take money out of their stabilization? Can they do, and my, um, my position, and I'm going to try not to be too salty when I say this, um, is that's our responsibility to take a look at our budget. And, um, I don't, we, we know where we're at, we know we're being, um, fiscally prudent. And I don't really, um, want to be, um, interrogated, uh, by members of the school committee on how we're spending our money. Um, because I feel very confident that we've made the right decisions as a board. Um, Mr.
Yeah, that, that's a rabbit hole there, yeah. You don't want to go, go down because, I mean, the whole idea of, um, the school ed reform was affordability for the town, towns give a contribution, what they can afford, and the school committee can decide where they spend it. Because if we went down that rabbit hole, we could, there's all sorts of funds that they have, and you'd, we'd get nowhere. We'd say, what about your circuit breaker, what about these screens, why can't you do that? You'll never get anywhere, so basically, I think that's a good.
I mean, kind of the theme is, let's everybody try to stay in your swim lane.
Yes.
Um, and, you know, just as they've been elected to do a job, and we're going to say they're doing their job, we've been elected to do a job, and I know we're doing our job. Um, and that isn't to say if, like, generally people have a question about things. I'm not saying that we don't have, but what, what I don't want is to get into some, well, you gave your police this and your da-da-da. There's always reasons for things that are, you know, above and beyond. Um, and I feel very proud of the negotiations that this board did with our unions. Um, and anything that we gave to our first responders, they damn well deserve. So, uh, I'm not going to be second-guessed, I'm not going to have the board be second-guessed about it. Um, so I know I got a little salty than I intended on that, but, um, so, um, so I think, and then the other thing is, there's, I think passions are, you know, definitely riding high, my own included. Um, and I just would implore that when we go there, and I'm hoping that, um, other folks will kind of follow these rules of engagement, um, that we don't get into finger pointing. Um, and I'm not looking at you for any other reason.
You're waiting for me to be salty.
No, no, you just lead forward, so that's why I looked over at you. It wasn't that I was picking you out. Um, you know, it certainly, again, free speech, say whatever you want, but, uh, what I'm saying is, it's not going to serve, because we have a math problem here, um, to solve, or not solve. I, I should say, the school district has a math problem. Um, and it's a question of whether we're all going to be able to try to solve it together or whether, you know, we, we don't do that.
I could be civil.
So, I know that about you, Mr. Hickey, I'm well aware. Um, I've spent six years with you, and I know that you can be civil.
I'm going to get salty.
So did anybody have any other concerns? Okay, well, um, Eric, I deeply appreciate all the many, many extra hours that you've put in on this and the FinCom folks and, um, Ms. Green and, you know, um, Ms. McDowell, I appreciate it. I know you, um, you guys are the unsung heroes behind the scenes, um, you know, pulling all kinds of little miracles off. So, um, so we'll go, we'll listen, um, and then we will take it all under advisement and see where we end. Um, I'm hoping, I'm really just hoping that, um, we can try to focus on the situation at hand and not get into assaults on personalities and what have you. Um, and you may need to remind me of those words, you know? You may need to say those words back to me.
Just squeeze around a little bit.
Exactly, kick me under the table. Um, all right, if any, no, yeah, Mr. Hill.
I have one question, it's not related, directly related to this, but it is direct, it's related to the school, just, many people that I've come up to in town are asking about the, why Whitman pays a certain percentage and why we pay a certain percentage. And I explain it to the best of my ability, you know, but it would be, it would really help to have a little spreadsheet or something with the formula they use to determine why we are in, why we are the wealthier town. And, you know, half of it is based on, you know.
Well, that's not the district doing that, though, that's the state that's doing that determination.
But it is, but it's related, but it would be good, but the state hasn't been able to give us that information.
Yeah, it has to do with all sorts of things, like income levels, EQB.
That's what I mean, all that stuff. That's what I'm saying, it'd be great to see a, a spreadsheet, say, okay, pick a year.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty, income level in, in Hanson, income level in Whitman, da-da, and next to each other, da-da, and this is why. So when somebody says, why are we in this?
There must, there must be some type, no, no, I know there is, it isn't out there now, but I'm just, is there some type of, um, more transparency that we can bring to that process? Um, because as much as it sticks in people's craw that, um, we've got the statutory method, you know, um, instead of the per pupil, which we had historically, um, and despite this prior board's best efforts, and I will assure those naysayers out there that there were efforts not to, um, implement the statutory method. Uh, we are where we are, but it does, you know, when you drive around and maybe, you know, and you look at Hanson, you say, how are we the wealthy town? Yes, there's pockets of folks, you know, that, and as Mr. Weeks, you know, alluded to earlier, that don't mind paying extra money and, you know, and that, and that, that's, you know, that's great for them, that works out for them, they don't have a problem with it, but that isn't the vast majority of the town. And so I'm wondering if there is some way that we could get, um, the answer to that riddle, which is.
Yeah, that onion can be peeled back.
What, what is that formula that they use? And it seems to me as if they're making a determination, then there must be an ability for us to have some information on how that determination is made.
I mean, there is a set rules.
That's right.
This percent of this, this percent of this.
Yeah, that's right.
But, but the this and the this, it's like, well, where do you, where do you get all this information? And it needs to, it, it seems like we should have something.
Maybe there could be a workshop at one of the SecWoods meetings, just a primer on how that, where all that works.
Who, who would be able to do that for us?
Um, I mean, we could come up with something, like, we could do, give it a best shot. And then there's another guy, there's a guy named Mark Abrahams, who's like, he's a good expert on it. He's a guy that you come in as a guest, but you know him, right?
I do.
Yeah, so he's probably, he would be the best guy to do it, he teaches it.
Okay.
He teaches net school spending, so if you brought him in, if he's willing to come in for like an hour and give a little presentation at the board, a little workshop, he'd probably be willing to do that.
I think that would be helpful, don't you guys? Yeah, okay, all right, all right, yeah. If we can, um, put it, put that in the parking lot for a future. Yeah, okay, all right, all right, yeah. If we can, um, put it, put that in the parking lot for a future meeting, that would be amazing. Thanks for bringing that up, absolutely. Yes, yeah. Okay, um, we've been around the world, I'm back again. Um, and if nobody has, um, anything else to add, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and we'll reopen our meeting when we join our brethren in Whitman Town Hall, which I've actually never been to Whitman Town Hall for, like, an official meeting, so this'll be interesting.
We're going to Whitman Town Hall, not the school.
No, no. Isn't it at Whitman Town Hall, Ms. Green?
In, in, yes.
Um, I, I, I think you can park along the street, and they've got all of our license plates.
Yeah, I think you have, you might have to go around the back.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? All right, great, thanks.
I was waiting for that joke.